Alrighty, it's 6:00 PM. I'm gonna call the meeting to order clerk. We have a roll call and an establishment of a quorum.
Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Barb Stotts.
Here.
Mike Whitler.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Here.
Dylan Helmanstein.
Here.
And I'm here as well.
Alright, I have proof of posting. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move 8.1, our action item to approve transitioning from eight-man to eleven-man, to after 5.1. So we can move it up and not take so much of the time like last week. Do I have a motion for that?
So, second.
Okay. Hearing time, Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so I'll take a motion to approve your agenda.
Second.
Okay, Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yep.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Alright, our public input tonight. Just to review, for board policies, it's not a time that we can offer any discussion for what's said, but each individual will have two minutes to stand and share your thoughts and concerns with us. So first up, we'll welcome Connor to the floor.
Mr. Senator.
Yep, that's totally fine.
Alright, good evening. My name is Connor Hurley. I'm currently the head football coach at Wisconsin Heights. This is my input. I'm trying to go eleven-man from watching it for my 21 years being here. We do not have the size to go to eleven-man. I didn't say the numbers. It's the size of the kids we have that's the problem. We don't have these smart kids that we once had. My eighth grade year, 2015, was the last year youth program at Heights was here. We were eleven-man then, and even with the youth program, we couldn't keep kids coming out for eleven-man varsity. With that being said, there won't be a JV team. I will need everyone that goes out to fill the eleven-man varsity roster. We lose seventeen kids after this year. I know of two kids in eighth grade playing football and two kids in the seventh grade playing football and three kids also playing for sixth grade. And I know this because I'm in contact with the head of the youth football program at St. Francis, Tom Murphy. There are about six kids from sixth to eighth grade that play football for SOG that go to Heights. I know this because I have a cousin on the sixth and eighth grade team. That's a total of about eight to ten kids between three different grades that will be coming out. It's simply just not enough kids to keep eleven-man program going. Shawn Williams and I are working on getting the youth program back up and going. With that being said, we don't know who is coming out. We don't have it up and running yet. We don't know any numbers. So why try and make the jump to eleven-man when we don't know the kids that even are coming out for youth program? In 2015, we had seventeen guys on the football roster, including JV and varsity, for the last year of eleven-man. During those years, we also had a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade football team, and we still could barely make a varsity roster. Why? Because so many kids got hurt. Nobody wanted to play. We go eight-man in 2016, and the rest was history. We never had one losing season. We won conference myself and Rhea in 2018 for the first time in 20 years. We had packed home stadium games. Every game is competitive. We have traveling fans. We got the Wisconsin State Journal following us this year. When we were eleven-man, that wasn't a thing. Eight-man has sent more kids to play college ball than eleven-man has, or at least has gotten more kids over here interested to play college ball than eleven-man ever did because you gotta kind of have a winning ability program to get kids up there. We have turned this program around by going to eight-man. From one and eight seasons to seven and two. Last year, we had thirteen all-conference players, kids getting all-state. None of this was happening in eleven-man. None of our kids have shot. Our biggest guy next year is a bright now, 205 pounds. After that, it drops to 170, and it just keeps going down. And I looked at Cashton's, and they have fourteen guys over 215 pounds, and they'd be in a conference for eleven-man. Why take all this away from these guys? I know that all these guys right here would rather go six and two and get a conference and get all-conference awards than to go two and six and just to get one playoff game. If we were eleven-man, we wouldn't have any of the good we have. I say that because I've been here since birth. I watched this program burn under eleven-man, and I watched it come back alive with eight-man. Don't do it for me or anyone else, just do it for the kids. That's all, yeah.
Thank you. Alright, next up, Colby.
My name is Colby Cake. I've been coach here for two years. A little bit about me, I did play eleven-man all through high school. I played at a Division One school, incredibly successful. So making the transition from eleven-man to eight-man was maybe a little bit rocky at first, but you know, just like the kids, adapted really quickly. Just some numbers that really poked out for me when I first came here was seeing the record of conference wins that they had, you know, prior to going to eight-man, and it was three over seven years. And I mean, the records were one, two wins, which is just incredibly demoralizing for a coach and for a player. Because if you have younger kids, you know, if you have younger brothers and you're getting just snuck kicked out of it, you're not gonna encourage your brother to come out and play football. Because we're only gonna win one game, we're gonna just, you know, I'm beaten up, I'm bruised, it's just not fun anymore. And that's why the last year eleven-man numbers, I feel, were really low. But the transition to eight-man was really smooth. It was really smooth. And I just feel like if we were to go back to eleven-man, that transition would really not be very smooth at all. Just with the size that we have and the majority of our coaching staff, you know, they've done eight-man, Connor's played it, he's coached it, but now to have to go to eleven-man, it's a completely different game. Just because you have three different guys on the field doesn't, you know, it just adds more complexity to it. So I feel like with the numbers that we have and the amount of success that we have, you know, last year, we started 0-3, and then we rallied and went four and five and finished. Which, you know, four and four, that's 500, you know, that doesn't really, you know, it's not popping off the paper, but you know, for a smaller school with the guys that we had, you know, just the amount of growth that they had and the willingness to win was there. You know, we got one, and then we just kept building and building and building, and you're not gonna get that if you only win one or two. You know, if you win one and then you lose five in a row, the mentality is really hard to keep players up and coaches to try to keep those guys up. And, you know, just seeing the different conferences that we could be added to, I mean, some of the size that these guys have, these are Division One, Division Two sizes. These are the size guys that I play against in high school. So, and I just feel like, you know, just a scheme-wise and just making that transition would be a really difficult thing to do for Heights right now. If we got more consistent numbers of, you know, the freshman class, you know, over ten guys came out, if those numbers can consistently continue, then I think that could be something we could come back to. But just where we stand right now, I don't speak for Connor, but I think it'd be a really difficult transition. And I just, yeah, that's what I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to 3.1, minutes and payroll. Do I have approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes of September 9th, 2024?
Absolutely. Second.
Yeah! Take a seat, welcome! Alright, I have a motion. Isaiah.
Yes.
Mary Beth. Mike.
Yep.
Matt.
Yep.
Dylan.
Yep.
Angie.
Yes.
Alright, I vote yes as well. Reports.
Just a couple of quick things. We are in testing mode right now at the high school and middle school, elementary school, and we just had our first fire drill, which went smashingly well, so that was great. It's homecoming week, and I'm gonna let the students talk all about that. And a couple of things that we're just working on, we're just working still with our threat assessment and safety protocols, so we'll be doing that this upcoming, actually tomorrow, we're gonna start having another conversation around that. And we got our Dane County Youth Assessment data back, and so we'll be looking at that and seeing where we sit around in mental health, prevention, all of those key things, and then working towards putting some things in place in our buildings to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our students. Lots of other things on the report I gave you, but any questions?
Alright, awesome, thank you. 5.1, we now have a presentation from our student council on our big homecoming week.
Well, why don't we have, yeah, let's have the students, we'll have meeting, introduce themselves first, so that they can go.
We're gonna have you right here next to them. And then Bevel, she can show a dance of slides. Maybe first a quick introduction.
Okay, so my name is Amelia Parker. I'm the junior class vice president.
I'm Eve Hildert. I'm a fresh, whoa, I'm sophomore, and I'm a member of the student council.
I'm Emma Adler. I'm a senior, and I'm our class vice president.
I'm Lydia Crowe, I'm a senior, and I'm senior class president.
I'm Charlie Rosen, I'm a sophomore, and I'm the vice president.
So welcome, guys.
Okay, so this is our presentation about homecoming week, which is this week. We decided to do like a point system this year for a spirit award to kind of get more people involved, I guess, in like the district and, you know, school spirit and everything. So we've got like dress-up days, the skits and floats, window decorating, and then the powerpoint and boys volleyball games, and the third award, and then point systems for winners and people who participate the most. So yeah, for every competition, there'll be someone that gets first, someone that gets second, someone that gets third, someone that gets fourth. That's based on your grade, so each grade gets a place. Yeah, based on your participation in the activity. And so, the higher your place, the more points you get.
And then at the end of the week, the class with the most points gets the spirit award.
These are the guidelines for our floats. Yeah. I don't know what else to say. People make the floats. Yeah, and a class has a float that they go in the parade Friday after school. Yeah, the class members work on it. They need time to work on it.
Yes, we get time to work on it on Wednesday, otherwise, before that, it should already kind of be established, like how you're gonna build it, but you get more time. We have more time this Wednesday since it's a half-day.
I think that it's super nice that they gave people time during school, because this year, people for the skin and the float have time to work on it during school. So I think that might encourage more people to get involved and help out with that.
Our float guidelines, they're basically around the same as our skip guidelines, just be smart, so no profanity, no bad language, or obscene gestures, or obscene themes. Mostly just keeping it school-appropriate, so, including with like no racial or ethnic or sexual oriented slurs. And they were also told about like if there was any of this, that they would be disqualified and that there'd be other precautions for, depending on what it looks like.
Here are the skip guidelines. They're pretty much the exact same as the float guidelines. Yeah. And it has the same, if any of these laws or rules are broken, then your skip for your class will be disqualified and there'll be further people taking it.
So all the skips need to be turned in by Wednesday, the homecoming week. And I guess our main theme for the homecoming is like Twilight or Twilight Hour, and so that's one of the ideas that kids for the skip can do, or also going with like a Kick and the Panthers, as that's who the football team would be playing.
This, we have an example of a skip, but we don't have to watch that. And then there's window decorating, so each class also decorates a window in black earth because the parade this year is in black earth. So they talk to the businesses about using their windows, and then a couple of the kids from the class go out there and paint some picture related to homecoming this year on the windows as just like another way of showing pride for the school, and it's another way to recognize.
And that goes off with the theme usually, with the, depending on what the rival school is, so I know most of them are like, have to do with the Panthers, and this year, the window painting is in black earth. That's the parade.
You're just there, sure we know.
These are some examples of windows from past years. Okay, so yeah, we have a powerpoint game, which is girls' football on Wednesday, and I think that that's a super fun type of activity because it's just like, obviously, girls don't play football, but I mean, and it gets a lot of people involved, and then we have like football boys, they coach, and it's just a fun night, and everyone gets shirts and everything, so that's always like another school spirit thing that kids get when they play, and it's just.
Is it eight-player or eleven-player? I was just wondering. I was just curious, is it eight? Oh, seven. I was just curious, I mean, I didn't mean to be like, I was just curious. What kind of fornication is that?
Yeah, and during halftime, we also like tug of war with, it's just the girls, I think. You know, it's just the guys.
Boys volleyball, it's so much fun. Each class has two teams this year, except for the junior class, because they have, they don't have enough people. But we're doing two teams this year so that everybody can play, because in past years, we've had like one team with fifteen kids, and then you only have six kids on the court, and it's just, some kids just don't get to play. So you all play each other to find the winner, and then the winner of the tournament gets to play the staff during the pep rally. And the boys volleyball game is Wednesday during school.
The homecoming football game is September 27th at 7:00 PM for the Panthers. And the homecoming dance theme is Twilight Hour, and it's Saturday, September 28th, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM in the cafeteria.
And then this was mentioned before, how this year during homecoming week, kids are given a chance to work on skips or floats during school, like during school, and this year, Mr. Hopper will be hopefully helping out with the floats and everything, because that's where the kids will be working on them, and then other activities, like just a little gear, step outs, everything. If you guys wanna sign up for a homecoming game on Wednesday. That's all.
Nice!
Which class do you think is gonna win?
The juniors.
Are they really gonna win this season?
I heard this.
I have a question. What have you done to incorporate the elementary school into the middle school, high school homecoming festivities this year?
I think this year on Friday, we're planning on doing a pep rally in the morning, where like coaches or a few players from the team, sports teams are gonna go down there and just kind of talk, introduce themselves, yeah, and talk to them about what, like what you can do in high school and what you can be involved in. And I think they're bringing court down there as well, just to kind of let them engage a little bit in our activity.
And they also are doing the dress-up days with us. For some of them, they have different things, like on Wednesday, we're doing Adam Sandler Day, and like elementary schoolers don't remember that day, so we have a crazy hair day.
We are also doing a door decoration competition, and then the homecoming court is judging the doors.
Any other questions?
Our middle school is also a part of this too. I know the last high school, but middle school also has the choices on Wednesday as well. They're mainly not doing the floats aspect, they're doing banners that could be used in the parade and hung in the hallways throughout. But still having the same options to be part of.
I'll just say how refreshing it is to have your involvement and have it spread across all the schools. Been a long time coming, but everybody in the room is why we're here, and so your engagement and participation in it is what it should be, and so really exciting stuff that you planned for the week, and hopefully we'll get a win on Friday! Alright, any other questions? Alright, thanks so much for coming. Alright, moving on to 5.2, which is our action item to approve transitioning from eight-player to eleven-player that we moved up. Attached, we will find the survey results from the survey that went out. Melissa, do you wanna say anything about the compilation or like, you know, the questions?
We had 176 people respond to the survey, which was great. I really appreciated all of the involvement from the community and from, we got a lot from like parents of, you know, upper elementary, lower middle school families who were interested and invested, and it showed me this is a conversation we need to keep having, because there were some questions involved that kind of came up from people that are some of those nuanced things we talked about last time. Around, you know, the extra division, you know, for eight-man, which doesn't happen, or more JV games and how that's, I mean, I wish that I could have a JV game every week for eight-man, but in reality, you know, we had to have a team canceled for next week, and there's just no one to take that space. So, so things like that were questions that came up from people, and it was great to be engaged in those conversations. So I really appreciate that.
Any questions for Melissa?
Not for Melissa specifically, but I do.
Okay, hold on, well, let's just, yeah, does anybody specifically have any questions about the survey?
Thank you for getting the survey out, though. It was, there was a lot of engagement, you know, with the Facebook posts that went out to the community members. There was a lot of engagement with the community, with Adam, with the comments and everything, so it was, it was nice to, you know, to read all the comments from the community input too, so, so it was nice to see, to see all the, you know, the interaction with the community too, so thank you for getting that out there.
It's my pleasure, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, we're opening the floor to other questions or things that need to be discussed that haven't already been discussed.
I would just say, I mean, it was good to have the conversation, like you said, and I just wanna shout out our coaches, who are two young men leading a lot of guys on this team, so thank you for coming to speak today and leading in that way, both on the field and here in the boardroom, I think we all appreciate that. And it shows that a lot of the time, sometimes these hard discussions are exactly what we need, because I'll be frank, I didn't know all the things that we needed to consider about moving to eight-man, staying at eight-man, and now having everybody come. I think we have a good idea of what answers we do need to have if we were ever to make that change, and we're hoping for a win on Friday still, so.
I think some of the stuff that came up too, that I didn't think about before the conference, it was like what you said about the refs and not always being able to secure officiants and stuff, and I think if, you know, if the prevailing mood and thoughts of the board and the district are to stay with eight-man, if that stuff remains difficult, we need to be agile enough to help figure out how we can support that for the rest.
One issue we have is just being one of the few eight-man in like the Dane County area, so when you go to areas with a lot of small schools that do a lot of eight-man, those guys live right there, but you know how we don't necessarily like to ride a bus for two hours, right, to go to a football game? Officials don't, aren't gonna drive two hours to make eighty-five dollars. They're just, each way, two hours each way. And so, those are, those are just those considerations, and yeah, that's the discussions that we keep having.
Is it a different level of certification to be eight or eleven-man?
No, it's all the same, but like we, if you wanna go to the eleven-man tournament and officiate there, you have, they're looking at your eleven-man officiating record.
Is it something that we could look into sponsoring local community members that are interested in becoming refs, or?
Once we get closer to summer school, I'd love to check.
Just, you know, that'd be great. It'd be great if we could incorporate some community members, that would be great to do that. Absolutely.
Know what it takes to have a call.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, and I think what this showcases is the importance of getting, you know, all the perspectives, and I think we talked about that last time, is we can sit up here and I remember transitioning to eight-man in the first place, and it was to save the program. We had a thriving soccer program and with small class sizes, and so push and pull of resources and people, and so it was to save a program, and you're gonna have ebb and flows of participation and class sizes and numbers, and I think this is a great conversation to have, because through time, things change, and it's, it's a good conversation, you kind of forget about it, it just, it is what it is, but we don't have these conversations as fluid as we should about check-ins, how are things going, how are the students feeling about it, the coaches, what is the world and climate of eight-man, you know, all that kind of good stuff. But I think even some of the data shows, I think some of the, maybe the younger youth parents that are strongly preferring eleven-man, maybe don't have the same data that you all are sharing about the good and the promise of eight-man, and maybe we can say the numbers are thriving because of the interest in what eight-man provides too. So I think it's a conversation that has to be ongoing and that you spread the word to some of the youth and the parents that have some footballers coming up and saying there's a lot of promise and success in eight-man, and it's a good sell to have the gentleman in the room selling that to the younger kids too, because like we say, our athletic programs aren't all about trophies and winning and all the other things that come with it, and yep, we don't, we don't get playoffs, but there's a lot of other good that is coming out of it. And so, like with the student council, we appreciate all of you that have come and voiced your opinions, because this is, you all are why we're here, so. Any other statements, questions while we're on the topic? Okay, so, as it is an action item on the agenda, I will ask if there is anyone to provide a motion to approve transitioning from eight-player to eleven-player football for the 26, 27 school year. Okay, given no motion, eight-man is staying, and I think somebody said last time, doesn't mean it's forever, but for now, that's, that's what it is, and we'll keep the conversation going. And we will move on in our agendas. You all are free to, or stay, or stay. Thanks, Melissa. I know you have a bunch going on too, so.
Or the next two items contentious in any way.
The co-ops.
The co-ops.
No.
The co-ops will not be.
Awesome.
Nope.
Good deal with soccer.
Thank you for listening.
Great to see you all.
Changing hats.
Okay, moving on then to 6.1, we have an update.
Okay, moving on then to 6.1, we have an update on our school's safety.
Fantastic. And everyone should have gotten just my notes. So we, as you might know, within the district, we've talked a little bit before about just some of the safety protocols that have been in place in our district and some that we need to just revisit and rethink based on just what makes sense from a safety perspective at, at district level. So one of those would be our door policy. There's lots of things I'm coming at, meeting you at, right? I would, already, but this is the one we're talking about tonight. So ultimately, right now, our doors for all of our buildings open around 5:45 in the morning and they're open till 9 o'clock at night. Other than during the school hours. And so people are free to access, go back and forth. When we looked at, so the Department of Justice puts together materials to, to basically let districts know if they're in compliance with certain safety precautions that they've looked at. And so when we got our information back from the Department of Justice, that was one thing that they felt we weren't in compliance with is because our building doors are open for that, those lengths, that length of time. Also working with our local law enforcement, we're like the only district they know of that allows their, their buildings to be open and accessed so freely. So that was one of the biggest changes that we wanted to make and we, we know that making change is always hard, right? So it's not like we're starting this tomorrow. We want to implement it starting November 1st. And so what would happen is our buildings, so elementary buildings would be open from 7:15 to 8:00 AM. So our students and families can have access to come in and out. And then our middle school, high school would be 7:45 to 8:20. And then from there on out, our buildings would be closed or wouldn't be accessed by the public. You can still come to the, the doors, the, you know, the, the entrances to the buildings, just like you can on any normal day and get buzzed in and allowed to come in. Also, if there's an event, that there's a basketball game, those, the doors would be open because we can lock the doors going into other portions of the different schools so that those access points would be open. If you were a community organization that wanted to use the building on, you know, Saturday or after hours or even any of our sports, those coaches will be given fabs just like our staff are. And so that's how you would access the building. So you'd be given a specific timeframe that you'd be able to access the building. What we're also going to be looking at doing is this master key right here. A lot of people have them in the community and we really would like to get them back. And what we're hoping to do is actually put Fab access to our gyms as well. So you would no longer have this key to open them. So you would, you would just get in with this key and you'd only be able to access the, whatever facility you're renting out or using at that time. There are lots of safety protocols that we've just changed and there's a lot of things that we want to talk to the community about just in general with utilizing our buildings. So what we're hoping to do as we transition to November 1st is Melissa and I, and I'm sure our safety team will be a, a big part of this, is coming up with what those, those protocols are going to be. And then we'll host a couple of community events where people can come in that, anyone that wants to be able to use our facility will have to go to one of those or we'll have a webinar, something that they can access virtually. But they have to show that they've watched our new safety protocols, the new access, how to access the building. And then they would work with Melissa to get, figure out when those practices are to activate their fabs to be able to come in. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. And like I said, we, we know there's going to be lots of questions and concerns, but our hope is to, is to put it on social media, put it in the newspaper, just let people know, hey, we're going to this new, this new process. And then we'll have community events where they can come in, learn the process, so they understand how to access the building, what those new protocols are going to be. And just in general to know what our, as you, I think it's posted over there. So we do have new emergency protocols in our buildings. And that was another thing that we were not compliant with the Department of Justice, is that we didn't have an up-to-date for those utilizing our buildings after hours, that we didn't have a process for them to learn what our safety protocols are. So that will be something that they'll learn as, in order to use our building, that they have to know what those protocols are as well. Because we want to keep people safe at all times.
Questions?
Are you just going to have all the coaches and community members just deactivate all their cards until they, once this goes into effect? Because I know there's a lot of cards out there.
Right, so they will not, so yes, I'm.
If they don't turn them in, I should say.
Correct, right.
Yeah, but as old as new again. This is the same thing that's happened before where we had pendulums on one way where it was like, when we first got the systems for it, it was, well, it was not designed to restrict access. Well, it became that very much then. Kind of after COVID, it got really loose and became leaving it open because some of the concerns was, is, with our gyms is, is that you can't see the entrance. So you don't know if you have kids waiting in the cold outside, things like that. If you don't always have an assistant coach, you're always wait, or if a kid walks out and a coach walks out a different minute, they're stuck outside. So those are some of the concerns, what some of the get-arounds we want to talk about. Whether it's the community when they use it, making sure they stay until the very last kid is gone. Or even our regular coaches having to wait until the very last kid is gone. Because the last thing we want is someone stuck outside in the cold, forgotten about, who may not have a cell phone or something like that. So then they're stuck on their own. That's the only thing I worry about with this. I think it's great because I think people should have access. But then the problem we used to have was, is that cards cost quite a bit of money back then, maybe they don't now. And who's assuming that cost as well as it's almost a full-time job programming or reprogramming those keys, from what I've been told privately. And it could be different, but those are just some of those obstacles that I wonder how they're going to go and how the flow is going to go for them. Because we don't want 25,000 keys out there, but we also don't want to leave it open. So whatever that balance is, is fine with me, but just, like I said, I just worry about kids getting stuck outside.
And then, I mean, there will ultimately be some things we have to figure out in, as we go through the process. But every other district doesn't have access. I mean, they've figured it out. We'll be able to figure it out. And so like today, you mentioned not starting it right away and as my child is like, I need to get my backpack. I'm like, are the doors locked? But you know, if it's an outdoor activity then, when they're done, like I'm just thinking the football game's over and they're all trickling in, but like the team's not together, coming in when the game's done. So is it, you know, right, like? And well, I mean, most of, I understand that. Little nuances of like, right, when the whole group isn't together, using a door at one time, how do you fix that? Logistically, it's not a nightmare for people, like I can't get in and then the coaches dealing with that, but they have, you know. And, and yeah, a lot of that, I guess, is just trial by fire and making note of like, okay, maybe we need to make adjustments here or there. We didn't think of this, we didn't think of that, but. Absolutely. I mean, our, we're not hoping to cause chaos for him, right? We're trying to work through as much as we can, yeah.
And we've just been down this road before and originally it came at the cost of like, a former athletic director gave us like four keys for 15 people. And it was like, we had to run to people's houses and drop them off and it was just like, if we could avoid that, that'd be fair. And like something they turned, something like that, or having like in addition to our like safety protocols for people who are using from the community, making sure they're responsible with, has your party left, I mean, things like, things that you probably figured out.
Right, yeah.
Those things too.
If you are responsible for, you know, these kids, it's like you need to be responsible for those kids. Like is everybody left? You know, is everybody in? You know, that sort of thing. I mean, they should be held responsible too for, you know.
But I think we can acknowledge it got out of control. People abusing their rights and it is a privilege to have access. So you can't give it to your brother or cousin to use when they want or, you know, so there has to be some, some protocols in place and.
It'd be interesting to know how many people have keys and access.
I don't think I have one though.
Yeah.
I don't.
I think you would be finding out that the people who don't have keys in the community that are a smaller number.
So would we rekey like for the master key too, like the physical, like, would we rekey or re-lock, redo the locks for everything?
So what, we're looking at a lot of different things right now because the middle high school, for example, we need to switch the locks because right now they lock from the outside and it, it's, to be in compliance, you need it to be able to push button lock from the inside so you can quickly lock your door because otherwise there's an intruder to think they have to, okay. So all of the locks in the middle of the high school, I believe, are going to need to change anyway. So there's talk about, we, we're not sure what that, what the master key situation will look like. But we're hoping to put Fab access on the things that people are really using. So they would need a master key if they were coming into the building. They would just need a Fab to get into.
That makes a lot more sense than a master key.
Is it cost prohibitive to also FOB every classroom? I mean, get all.
It's very expensive.
Because I mean, when you gotta go into lockdown, you know, being able to press a button from the central office, like, you know, seems a little safer than physical keys.
Yeah, there are schools out there that have.
I was going to ask too about hallway access because I feel like once you get in here, especially those for high school, it's pretty easy to get almost anywhere because there aren't that many doors that are locked. And then it's like, well, if we have to give key access, then they can get through those doors too. So like, are we going to implement some sort of restrictions after hours where, yeah, you can get into this lobby, but you can't get any further through like the gyms or the locker rooms? Because it gets to be, I feel, pretty easy if the south gym is open and you're entering the main doors to get to the whole high school.
Right. Well, during an event, we can close some of those doors so they can't access cer- certain hallways. But you're right, there might be situations where they do have access to other hallways, just given a certain Saturday. But the doors are always still locked. They don't have a door to get into any of the classrooms or things, but. And that's where it comes into play, where we have those conversations with, if you're a community member and you're bringing in eighth grade basketball team in, know where those kids are, make sure that they're all counted for and they're not utilizing spaces that they're not here to utilize. And we have a camera system and we can, there's things we can look into if we need to, to say, you're not following protocol. And then say your access is going to get restricted if that continues.
I do actually have one. Was it a year ago, we had an issue where we got locked out and you two.
It was Mike and I, yeah, it was after.
Because they didn't lock the one door.
Yeah. We didn't have a key from the outside. We can't lock from the inside, but we did have a lock from the outside. You had one in your car, thankfully.
Yeah. And I think it was almost more of an issue of like phone tree of who, who can we get a hold of at this time of the night?
You could hold anybody.
It was like an off-meeting for a workshop or something?
No, I think it was just a meeting that went late.
But I think my.
It was an executive meeting and then everybody had left and there was nobody here to lock the door.
Which felt crazy.
It was like, poor Dale, he lives the closest. Well, we've talked a lot about the Allen wrench as well. Right, answer problem one. So is it my car? There will be more conversations around that and how that shakes out. But yeah, we know that those have been concerns and we're, because ultimately, I mean, we've talked about this, that front entrance may, we're, we're going to need to look at that in general, just from a safety perspective. So there might be changes on what that looks like. So, I mean, and I would guess if board members are running into the, like, meetings are going later, that you're going to have more access on your Fab than other people would.
And so, you know, in theory, like is that door, which isn't a FOB right now, or is it one that we open on the side?
Yeah, that's got a FOB on it.
Is it like motion? Like, does it trigger something saying the door was opened, like in our IT system?
So that's another thing. It doesn't. So only on certain entrances are they wired to know what the Fab. So some of the side entrances, for example, if those get propped open, there's no alarm, there's nothing that alerts the office that anything's propped open. So that's another thing that we're hoping to do is get all of those re, they're built, the doors are the perfect doorstep wire. We just need to get the wiring into them so that we know when they're propped open.
This is where the non-compliance comes.
That's where, not the barrier, we were not compliant, okay?
I would say, I, I would want every single FOB to track who it is, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Who opened the door, who accessed it, yeah.
Yes, I think that's the same grace of the FOBs is you can deactivate, you can register, everything is, you know.
You can see their activity throughout.
Yeah.
So what about, I don't know if it's even feasible, but different punch codes that you can turn on and say, this number unlocks the door for this hour. You can turn that number off. That way you don't have the cost of all the FOBs and, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's even more feasible or not. Sure.
Today is 1, 2, 3, 4.
I was just, you would have one code for each person, but, or each team.
And there, it might, it might be the case too, and this is all, all the things we're considering, is that it might be like a lockdown like after 9:30 at night. So even if Liz were, even though she would, might have access, she might, we might, you might have to come in and there, there will be an alarm that goes off and you have to punch a code once you get inside to deactivate so the police don't come. So there might also be those things in place, but we, all things we have to talk through and find costs and all of the things, but.
I mean, I feel comfortable because I, I wouldn't think that that number, number is an exuberant of people entering. You know, that if it's, if the FOB is registered to somebody and on a weekly basis, if it's you or whoever that's checking, who, who is FOBbing in at 10:00 PM?
Right.
Wow, it's you regularly. Why are you here?
Yeah, we're, we can talk about all these things.
You know what I mean? Like, I feel like that's a good safe hole of like, then having to bug the police every time somebody forgets to try the alarm off or something. But, but yeah, obviously a lot of updates coming and thank you to all the work that you've been doing with the team because safety is, yeah, number one and I love it.
Can I ask one more question? So door access right now, I was at volleyball game this Thursday and they closed at 9:00 and then I think some kids did get locked out at that time. So is that something that can be changed, like dynamically, like, oh, we're hosting tonight?
Yes, we can, yes. We could definitely do that. So RT versus Sky.
It would be great if it was integrated into like our school, like the facilities calendar, that it would unlock for those events, those Thursday events, something like that. Just certain doors.
Well, and especially without having the custodial staff as regular as we do. Then it's like, you really have nobody here that you can knock on, you know, all day and be like, where's Brett? Right, but you know.
Right.
Other questions? Awesome. Alright, anything else?
Great.
I think that's it. Alright, and then so we're getting quotes and then you'll bring us those at some point and?
Yep, well, this won't need a quote. This, this change, just locking the doors at those times. We'll start November 1st, but you'll see the information, the key things, yeah, that we'll have. The other things you'll be getting quotes on, like all of the, yeah.
And I mean, it probably is priority number one at this point, when you're not in compliance to move that project along and, right?
Well, what happens is like the grant that I was writing to do the digital mapping, if you're not in compliance, then you don't, you don't have access to those grants. So a lot of things are hand, go hand in hand, so.
So good, good find, right? Terrible. Alright, good. We'll be moving on then to 7.1 and just an update on our district WASBY bylaws amendment as we've changed from previous wording regarding our resolution. Dylan, do you want to update on the dates that we've added and status?
So I'm going to add two more dates, which are the deadline, deadline to propose an amendment for WASBY, which is December 13th. And our last board meeting is December 9th, but I would think we would all want to do something before that just so we're not catching anybody off-guard at WASBY or other school districts. And so as a part of that, there are the three series of dates there where I'm going to be taking the current proposal and showing it to board members from other area, regional school districts. So on the 27th and 28th, which is this weekend, I'll be missing the homecoming game. Will be members from across the state for the WASBY Policy Resolution Committee. So we are not going to be, we're not going to be able to show this to people during the actual meeting, but it ends, and then I'll show it to people while we're walking out or at dinner or at breakfast and stuff and see what people think there. I think that will be helpful because those are folks who are going to be in the thick of it for WASBY. And then on the 29th, which is that following Sunday, there is just an ad hoc. meeting that some folks from Baraboo and Sauk get together, which is like a Zoom based meeting for members who have time to meet. And they agreed to show this to the folks who are gonna have time to look at it and have a discussion about it. And then again, like we said at the last meeting, October fourth, which is the week after that, is the regional meeting where we'll have folks from more in our area that we can talk to about it and also the legislative staff. Which is good because hopefully by then we'll have an even better idea what other school boards are thinking. And just anecdotally, other board members that I've showed this to, like in other districts are like, oh, that makes a lot of sense, you know? And so.
Oh, finally, somebody's thinking about us.
Right, yeah. And, and so it, it's good to hear that. And I think that we're gonna push the conversation further about how WASBEE can include school boards in the process a little bit better. So that's, that's what's happening and I think that'll be just in time for the board meeting right after that, to have like a real discussion about what we wanted to.
And so the December ninth meeting, we would conceptually vote for the resolution to go to the delegate assembly at the convention, right?
Good question.
That's what, what leads it to, right?
Yeah, so this would still be at the.
Even though they said it couldn't.
Well, so this, we would be asking the delegate assembly at the statewide state education conference to consider this amendment to the WASBEE bylaws. So it's not a policy we're asking the state of Wisconsin to implement, it's our association of school boards who would be asking to implement. It would still happen at the delegate assembly. It would be a different process than the policy resolutions. It would be an amendment discussion. So we would need two thirds of all school boards in the states to vote yes on this. So if we do decide to propose it, we need to do a little bit of work or whoever would want to join me in doing that little bit of work to convince people it's a good idea to pass it, which is, and, and so that would happen in January, which is, I think we all have the opportunity to go to. And so related to that December ninth date, I would say we would want to pass it actually in October or November so that we not only give WASBEE officials the chance to think about it further, but also us, if we really, really care about it, to call around other boards and say, this is why we're proposing it and everything. Cause it's a much less structured system than the policy resolution.
So how often at the convention are there actually amendments proposed by school boards? Change, changes of the bylaws for.
I don't know.
Does that happen?
I assume it doesn't happen too often, just because.
So this might be the only one?
It would probably be the only one this year. And because I think a lot of school boards don't necessarily think the delegate assembly is useful, like we talked about this. And it gets to be a really long meeting because people can kind of just propose whatever they want to the resolutions packet because it doesn't feel consequential really. And we're going to be asking to make it a little more consequential, which could make it harder and there would probably be a lot of opinions. But I don't think that oftentimes a school board offers an amendment because, oh, just let the WASBEE leadership let us know and everything. But I'm saying, and I hope other folks here agree, is say that we need to have an association that works for the school boards and can really amplify our voice better than just emails and invites for noon meetings because I don't have a noon meeting. So.
Or it's, you know, like the sharing of the stories where our legislative board was at Washington's DC fighting for you and you're like, what were you, I didn't get the memo, did I? I didn't, what did we tell you that we, you know, like, where's the breakdown of who's leading who and guiding the needs of, right, the people that are doing the work?
And so the next, when, after we edge out these folks, these boards, whatever, go y'all to the regional meeting, I'll set up like a real presentation to walk through what WASBEE says is the current process versus what we would be proposing so that everybody's on the same page and really know. But it's still kind of like a fact finding process for this red amendment. Right now.
Yes, amendment.
Yes. So.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Hey, and they're already changing their actions, so look at us go.
Buy stuff. All right. Moving on, do I have a motion to combine eight point two and eight point three?
So, second.
We'll just say we're thankful for our co-ops and giving some extra opportunities with our girls swimming with Lodi and our boys soccer with Barnfield. Any questions?
Barnfield football.
I just read they're doing well with Monvera, have it some success.
Yeah, and then Monvera simply like, hmm, not so much.
Thank you for that. Yes, very bad. Yes. Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, nine point one, do I have a motion to approve the resignation of my past food service and cook in elementary?
So, move it, second.
Thanks, Mike, for your service. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Future meeting dates are listed there, I'll just make note. We are gonna meet with Shayna Lewis, October tenth. Sorry, Mary Beth, I'm gonna be traveling. For a legal workshop. And I think we did five thirty to seven. So October tenth is a date that works for everybody. And, yeah, it's just the first meeting I have there on the fourteenth of October. We always do the new employee meeting, so I add that there for five thirty. Excellent. Yep, and that is, is that the first?
The fourteenth, yeah, the first meeting.
Yeah, that's the first.
The second one's the annual meeting.
Yep. So our next meeting, yeah, okay. So have you, were you here when we did the first one last?
Yep.
Yes, okay. Yep, so we'll meet with our new staff, five thirty before a meeting on October fourteenth. We'll have some appetizers and we'll just get to know them a bit. And with that, do I have a motion to?
So, second.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.